We're gonna lay hands on you, Chris Banks. And pray God's favor on your life.
Yes.
I bought my wife up because my wife is my better half. And my anointing is not completed. Unless she is my wife. I want past the years, and I, and all of these wonderful men and women of God, to lay hands on Brother Banks, and we're going to pray a blessing over you. But I always said it is God. It is God that pulls down.
Afternoon, East New York, Brooklyn! Good afternoon! What a day, what a day. I mean, it's a day for change. This is the change. The date is no longer hindering on what it was a couple of years ago. This is a different day because of Councilmember Alexa's face. And I'm proud to be the emcee of your event today. Wondered where you heard in Brooklyn, and seeing all your lovely faces. And I'm gonna make this event ooh-a-dah!
To the members of this great, great community. And I want to thank everybody. How many of you knocked on doors, made phone calls, told your friends and neighbors, and everybody about Chris? Thank you, you are democracy in action. And I want to make one other acknowledgement. Chris had a great mentor and leader. And guess what? Brooklyn is in the House. House of Representatives. President Hakeem Jeffries. Don't forget, Brooklyn is also in the Senate. Who would have ever thought, the Democratic Leader in the House, and the Democratic Leader in the Senate would both be from Brooklyn? So, I'm so glad to be here. Today is a great day. And let me talk about four reasons, there are many, it's great. First, of course, it's a great day for our wonderful Chris. Now, Chris wasn't born with a silver spoon in his mouth. No way. He was born and raised right here in East New York. His mother had immigrated from Trinidad and Tobago. His father came from what New Yorkers would these days consider a foreign land, Texas. I have a reputation of liking my own jokes better than anybody else likes them. Together, Chris's parents instilled those values of hard work and perseverance, which he took to him in his schooling at PS 213, PS 223, 273, and the Anointed Minds Christian Academy. Ultimately graduating from the Leadership Public Service High School in Manhattan. He graduated from John J. College of Criminal Justice, and the higher institutions of higher learning in New York. Hit the ground running, taking all that he learned, and all the opportunities he gained, giving back to the community that raised him and gave him something. He founded so many civic organizations. He served on the 75th Precinct Community Council, the Van Sickland Block Association, Community Board Five. He fought rent increases and improved living conditions in Starrett City. And my favorite, he fought to prevent rent increases in Starrett City. Now, Chris and I have something in common. Because when I was a congressman, I represented Starrett City. And guess who wanted to take it over and raise the rents on everybody, and kick the working people out?
Who did that?
Donald Trump. And we kicked his pastor, I won't say a single word. I'll have to say butt. We kicked his butt, and he didn't take over Starrett City. So, what we like to say, as we say in Brooklyn, nobody put a silver spoon in his mouth. No one plucked him out of nowhere and said, "You're gonna be here in this, in this great office of council." He got here the old-fashioned way. He earned it. So, it's a great day for Chris. It's a great day for his family. We're joined today by some, his mother Dane, his brothers, Alexa and Nathan, his aunts, uncles, cousins. Raise your hands if you're part of the greater family. Congratulations to all of you. Because we all know in public life how important our families are. They gotta put up with a lot of stuff with us. I like to tell the story, I was at my daughter's five-year-old birthday party. And a pastor, pastor of the local church, called me up and said, "It's a cold March night. We have 300 people, mainly senior citizens, lined up out here to see our Easter pageant. But the Con Ed man has locked the door. And he said, 'You haven't paid the bills.'" He said to me, "Congressman," I was congressman then, "Congressman, we have paid the bills. We have them right here. You won't let us in. Get over here." Of course, I left my daughter's five-year-old birthday party. Got over there, argued with the Con Ed man, got them to let the senior citizens and everyone else in. They saw the Easter pageant, but I missed my daughter's five-year-old birthday party. She's now 32. She reminds me of it every two years. So, our families have to put up with us, but they also always have our backs. I was talking to a gentleman a while back. And as I'm talking to him, I vaguely recognize him. And my wife is pulling on my suit jacket. And I said, "What are you doing, dear? I'm talking to the man." She said, "Don't you remember? He insulted you 15 years ago." So, our families have our backs. They put up with us. This is a great day, not only for Chris, but for Chris's family. And it's also a great day for this 42nd District. We all know how challenging the last few years have been for Brooklyn, for the dog. We went through the worst health crisis since the 1918 Spanish Flu, the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression. There was no playbook for this moment in history. The few people who are still, you know, I mean, there were so many people we lost during that time. We all know that. And we know all what happened. But I worked hard to deliver money to New York City. A lot of people down in Washington don't do it. We did it, lots of money. And I knew, I knew what it took to get that money to the right places. I know Chris. He is the perfect guy to understand when we give help to the community, who would you go to, and make sure the right people get it, not people skim it off along the ways and everything else like that. So, that's a wonderful thing for this community, that Chris is gonna be here. And he knows the people here. He's been part of this community. You always want your elected official, or your members of the community, to understand who you are and what you need, and to listen to you. We have that in Chris Banks. So, this is not only a great day for Chris, not only a great day for his family, but a great day for members of this 42nd District. And finally, folks, it's a great day for these United States of America. You know, on cold November nights, election night, we get off the subway, we get off the buses, we line up at the polling place in quiet dignity. You wanna get home? Maybe put the meal on the table for your family. Maybe sit in your favorite chair and enjoy your favorite TV show. But no, we wait in quiet dignity, we do our duty, and until recently, we all abided by the result. Now, there are some people in Washington who don't want us to abide by the result. They will not succeed. This is democracy in action. Not what they are trying to do. And this, it's worth it. Let me, I like to tell in conclusion a story about Benjamin Franklin. Oh, says Tish. Tish, who wants to come up, she knows the story, she's heard it so much. Benjamin Franklin was sitting in a coffee house right outside of Constitution Hall in Philadelphia the day after they wrote the Constitution. And one of the leading matrons of Philadelphia came over to him and said, "Doctor Franklin, what have you gentlemen created in that Constitution Hall?" He said, "Man, we have created a republic, if you can keep it." Now, what does he mean by that? There were so many problems with the republic. One of the most, among the most worst things. Do you know who could vote? You had to be a white, male Protestant property owner to vote. How many of you in this room could have voted? I don't think any of us. I don't think any of us. So, there were a lot of problems. But here's what the historians tell us. The two things Benjamin Franklin and the founding fathers were worried about when he said, "This is a republic if you can keep it." The first was, would people participate? They knew human nature. They knew that each of us was always busy with our families, with our jobs, with the ups and downs, the vicissitudes of life that God visits on every one of us. Would people even bother to participate? And the second thing they worried about, was who would run for office? Would it be people who put themselves first, for money, ego, for power? Or would they be people who put the community first? Bad people, the people for money and power and all that? You know what they called them in those days? Scoundrels. You know what we call them today? Scoundrels. Well, but look at this beautiful church. And this is one of the great churches of Brooklyn, Pastor. Thank you for your leadership. Look at this room. It's cold, snowy, it's starting to snow. Not too bad, not too bad. I'm saying stay here.
Senator, I can't let you come on. I cannot wish you this.
And yet, this order to this beautiful church is filled with people who participate in political life, and church life, and civic life, and the education, in groups that help feed the hungry, in groups that try to keep, you know, our kids in good places. Oh, yes, the people are participating. And who have we put in office? Certainly not a scoundrel. Not even someone who's just-so-so. We have put in one of our very, very best, Mr. Franklin. So, Benjamin Franklin, we're looking down on this church this afternoon. It's mine. This is the democracy they wanted, and we're gonna fight to keep it. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's a great day. It's a great day for Chris. It's a great day for his family. It's a great day for the 42nd District, and it's a great day for the United States of America. May God bless them all. Thank you, and I'd be grateful to the afternoon.
That's my sister. Scoundrel.
You gotta love Chuck Schumer. Give him around a little bit. We stand here today as the fruit of Dr. King's labor. As a society led by people from all backgrounds and walks of life. And now, we have the responsibility to enlist, and inspire, and empower the next generation of great leaders. It's our turn to invest in the young people who will be the next to carry the mantle forward. You see, because as our speaker, and I'm gonna speak it into existence, a speaker Jeffries has taught us, great leaders create leaders and not followers. It's our responsibility to mold, and to mentor, and to motivate leaders. And as we begin this new year, and as we celebrate Dr. King's birthday, Chris Banks is a living example of that wise quote. Now, I know it's been four times, four times. But you know, there's such a thing as your time and God's time. I think I got some church folk up in here. And God has his own sense of timing. Perfect timing. Never early. Never late. Never in a hurry. But he's always on time. And so, all of us, we wait on the Lord. And we trust him. Because God holds the hands of the people. And when the power of the people are unleashed, great things will happen. And Chris, those who wait on the Lord shall renew their strength. Come on. They shall mount up with wings like eagles. And they shall run and not be weary. Because there is much to do in this district. And this community needs strong, dedicated advocates who will listen to everyone and respond to everyone. Families who need to be able to earn a living wage and put food on the table. Children who deserve to have a roof over their head and have opportunities to succeed. And children who must be kept safe on the streets of East New York. Can you imagine if all of us breathed life into every child that lives in this district? What a difference all of us make. And what a difference in the lives of these children. And what about my seniors? Seniors who should be able to afford basic medication and live out their golden lives in peace and in prosperity. And Niter residents who need to live in decent housing. And the residents of Linden Plaza.
Thank you!
We need to give voice to them each and every day. And we must stop the senseless gun violence that we are seeing in Brooklyn and beyond. And we must replace those guns with books, and services, and resources, and most importantly, love. Chris, God calls you now because you are the one for such a time as this. You've got an army of angels who are lifting you up. Serve them, my brother, with humility. And you, my friend, are a son of an immigrant mother from Trinidad and Tobago. And that is what makes this city special. Wave your flags, or if you don't have a flag, wave your hand. Wear a T and T. There you go.
Doubles.
You see, Chris, you're the hopes and the dreams of those who've come to this shore yearning for more. You were born for this moment, Chris. Continue to walk in his light. No need to be boastful. No need to be consumed with self-righteousness. Extend a hand to all of those. You are the bridge over troubled water, Chris. Never lose that hunger for service. That spark, that fire in your belly. Each and every day, wake up with that fire in your belly. You have this incredible, this undeniable drive to serve others. And that drive has defined your entire career. But always remember, Chris, and all of us as elected officials must remember this, that none of us got where we are on our own. I wish Justice Thomas would know that. So, as we move forward, fast and furious, Chris, we cannot let the urgent get in the way of the important. And what is important, Chris? Family. Relationships. Faith. And your core values. Never compromise your core values. And remember the people who got you here, the volunteers, the people who knocked on doors, the people who prayed for you, and the people who were with you. You owe so much gratitude to all these individuals. And so, Chris, before I introduce our speaker, I extend my hand to you. To use the law to right the wrongs, the past wrongs, and to bend the arc of the moral universe towards something that I love, sweet, sweet justice. And to light the path for the people of this district. Chris, your time is now. And now, I'd like to introduce someone to you who needs no introduction. Someone who knows a little bit about time, and knows a little bit about tough fights. You see, today, three years ago, the mega mob, they ascended upon the Capitol. Because they wanted to disrupt the peaceful transfer of power. But this young man, this young man is someone who is defending our democracy, not only here in New York, but all across this nation. And he has consistently and repeatedly shown up for Brooklyn, no matter what. Even in his darkest hour, in the midnight hour, as he still mourns the death of his father. So, we gotta pray for him. Because his father, Mr. Marlon Jeffries, was his rock. And he just funeralized him. But he is here today. And he truly is, he's masterful, as all of you know. Because of his lyrical skills.
He's playing bars?
Yeah, 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 I like that. He's a leader who knows where he comes from and who he belongs to. And a leader who can drop a few lines like Biggie Spomps. You know, like, "It was all a dream." I can't pretend. But it's a man who understands the people in the struggle. So, ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you my friend, my congressman, someone who I call Big Papa. Ladies and gentlemen, the next Speaker of the House, the man, the legend, the honorable, Hakeem Jeffries.
Looking at the House right now? To be here with all of you, certainly thankful for my sister, to Pastor Mitchell, the angel of this house, a mighty man of God. So appreciate him, all he does for the church and for the community. To the man of the hour, of course, Chris Banks, who has reached the promised land of representing this community that he loves so much. All of the distinguished members of the clergy, to the Banks family, to the community members and leaders, to my colleagues in government who are here to celebrate this occasion. It's good to be back home in Brooklyn. I'm thankful to our Attorney General, Tish James, my sister, for those kind words of introduction. Even more thankful for her fierce advocacy on your behalf. That's a bad woman. I get asked about this a lot when I'm down in Washington, DC. "Oh, I see your Attorney General doing her thing. She's fierce, and she's incredible. What can you tell us about her?" And, you know, I've said on the House floor, well, Tish James is Brooklyn's dream. And Donald Trump's birth might be. To lifting up the principle that no one is above the law. And we're thankful for that. So many distinguished people here to celebrate this brilliant young man, Chris Banks. We got the public advocate here, I mentioned the Attorney General, the House Democratic Leader, that's me, y'all. Senate Democratic Leader, the District Attorney, the trailblazing Speaker, of course, Nikki Lucas, our Assemblyperson, Roxanne Fasson, our State Assembly Member of the City Council. I mean, it's like a Democratic National Convention up in here. But watch this, here's the thing. It's not in City Hall that we're gathering. It's not in Albany that we're gathering. It's not in Washington, DC. We're here in East New York. And brought the power to East New York on your behalf. And this is just the beginning of the advocacy that he will undertake on your behalf. You know, Chris Banks, he's a good man. A hard-working man. A family man. Well-educated man. Community man. Compassionate man. Multi-wearing man. And a resilient man. A resilient man. And to me, resilience is one of the most underappreciated qualities of a public servant. Because this is a tough business. As Tish, and Chuck, and others mention, it's a tough business. You want someone in office who's demonstrated an ability to fight through adversity. And that's exactly what Chris Banks has shown in the races that he has run previous to this. And that isn't anything to run away from. Jomani Williams has lost races. Tish James has lost a race. I lost two races when I first started out. And what I realized, it was Churchill who once said, "Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. All that matters is the courage to continue." And we're thankful that Chris Banks. I've been faithful to God, as Pastor Mitchell has instructed him, to have the courage to continue. I put it a different way, a knockdown is different than a knockout. That's the Hakeem Jeffries remix, y'all. Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. All that matters is the courage to continue. And so, we're thankful that Chris Banks has had the courage to continue. Why? Because he loves this community with all of his heart, all of his spirit. And he's been laboring in the vineyards in so many different ways, providing leadership. And now, he'll have the opportunity to take that to another level. You know, one of the things that we can draw from history, and Rosa Parks, I think embodies this in so many different ways, is that you, you don't, you don't have to be the loudest person in the room in order to make the biggest difference. And people shouldn't mistake dignity. Chris is dignified with determination. He's both dignified and determined to go into each and every one of the rooms that he will have to go in, in City Hall, to get things done on your behalf. And so, this is a moment to celebrate this young man's elevation. And I'm looking forward to working with him. Well, I gotta tell you, as I close, that, you know, when I first came into office, I remember a time when, you know, Tish James and I came in around the same moment, and a few years after that, Jomani Williams got elected, and we were kind of viewed as the new kids on the block. The future of the Democratic Party. Potential rising stars. And it was nice to hear that. But then, a few years ago, we elected Nikki Lucas. Brilliant, young woman. See, Sandy Nurse and others representing adjacent districts. Chris Banks. And now, of course, people are appropriately saying, "Well, you know, Chris, and Nikki, and others, they're the future of the Democratic Party. The new kids on the block. Rising stars." Man, do I got to admit, Hakeem Jeffries is having a midlife crisis. But that's okay, because the continuity that Chris represents has been ordained for this community. And now, we have an opportunity to work together with Roxanne, and Chris, and Nikki, and myself, all in alignment to make sure that for Brownsville, and for East New York, we're gonna show up, we're gonna speak out, we're gonna stand out, and make life better for each and every one of you in these communities we're privileged to represent. God bless you, God bless you, Chris Banks, and God bless the East New York and Brownsville communities. Congratulations. Peace and blessings, love and light, everybody, how are you? The Speaker set me up. I'm not gonna sing, though, I can't. Thank you to the pastors, to the church, thank you all. This is my baby girl. So, some of y'all know the story. I just wanna thank y'all for praying for my family. My wife is cancer-free. And just a couple of weeks. Every time I have her with me, the Attorney General thinks I'm just trying to get votes. Anybody who knows... Anybody who knows, whenever there's a problem with the schedule, I lose that battle with my wife. Anybody who knows my wife, understand that's true. So she is here because I am a working parent, sometimes I have to daycare. Daycare is, that's all that's about, but, woo! What's this, three times a charm? Four times a charm, baby! But you know, no, because I know a lot of folks, you know, we know folks that have run for office, lost, and then disappeared. Chris Banks stayed and stayed and stayed and stayed again. Which says to me that this position and title, it's to only enhance the work that he is doing, and he was never tied up in a title in the first place.
That's right.
Isn't that right?
That's right.
And it's not the type of person that we want in these offices. People that the title is not the end goal. The end goal is helping the people of the district. And all I've seen is Chris Banks and all the stuff that he's had to do to get to here. That's the type of person he is, and that's the type of person we need right now. We're in a tough time right now. And we need people who understand that this thing is a long haul, but the battle is worth it. And people who understand that the seat that they hold is not more important than the people they represent. You're going into a, I'm gonna say heck, can I say heck?
You can say whatever you want. You can say whatever you want.
You're going to some kind of council, you're going to some kind of council.
Some kind of council.
Led by the first black woman and a majority women council. You know women get stuff done, so you gotta go in there and be a black. You gotta catch up, you gotta hit the ground running. Real talk, there is, by the way, I grew up in Starry City, so you represent a lot of people I know. Starry don't like to say they in East New York.
They in East New York. And it ain't spring creek either.
I know that Chris Banks and so many other folks understand the importance of public safety. And that's something that East New York, so many folks have been fighting for and understanding, and not confusing. Because our law enforcement partners who are here, we have to have them doing their job. And when we call 911 and pick up that phone, it is a human being that would ask to come to run the danger when we run away. And so we can never lose that sight of that when we have this conversation. But we also know that we can't just act them and do everything, it's unfair to them and it's unfair to us. And that public safety means we have to, while we hear some of our neighbors saying we need more law enforcement, they've also said we need more housing and we ain't getting it. They've also said we need more money for our schools and nurses and programs and they ain't getting it. They've also said we need better jobs so we can pay for things, but they ain't getting it. They also know that we need more than just potato chips in our corner stores for people to shop and they ain't getting it. So I know that Chris Banks understands that we need a holistic approach to public safety, and he's gonna fight for that. I'm gonna pause because our minorities, who be majority leaders in the House, are being Jeffries. And I know Councilman, uh, Rudy Joseph, I think was here as well, I know that the Speaker wanted to make sure that we recognize her. The last thing I'm gonna say, this is important, and I'm gonna make it a little hot, because it's important that we recognize that we have more black leadership than we have ever had. That's a shout-out because there's a lot of people worried about that. But I also don't want us to confuse black persons doing better with black people doing better. Because I'm so proud to be a part of those that have risen to leadership. But unfortunately, our folks aren't doing as much better as we thought they would have in this leadership in place. And so black and brown folks and working-class folks in New York City are not doing better. So we can't just switch whose leadership we're not gonna switch what the leadership is doing. Is that right, y'all? Is anybody? So let's make sure that while we wanna make sure we have folks that are diverse, if you ask me if you wanna have a diverse leadership, yes. But I'd rather have a leadership that's gonna make the people lives better. And that's what we're trying to do. And I know that Chris Banks is a part of that, and I appreciate that. And he had this in the House of God. God is the reason I'm here, it's the reason my baby girl is here. We continue to worship, and happiness is our focus, and I appreciate that. We got a lot of work to do. The last thing I'm gonna say to y'all is, anybody help Chris Banks get elected, raise your hand? Don't stop now. We have a tendency to elect people and then walk away. We gotta elect him and hold him up. But when he gets that hard call, he knows he has to do something to people, he can say, "I'm a dude, because I turn around and I got everybody still behind me." Don't let him go, still support him. Peace and blessings, love and light, New York. Thank you so much.
Oh my goodness, the Spirit of the Lord is here. I am so honored to be here today, to be in this house, because like you, never would've made it. I'm gonna put that down right now. Because you see, Councilmen, I don't think that they knew that when I put my hand up for the first time, that there would be a woman of God walking in to the other side of City Hall to do the first thing that I was born to do, and that was to worship and praise the Lord. And so, good afternoon, family. I am New York City Council Speaker Adriana Adams, and I am so proud to lead our first historic women-majority city council. Which is indeed the most diverse legislative body in our city's history. It's my honor to be here today to celebrate the inauguration for my newest colleague, Councilmember Chris Banks. And to celebrate all that he has done for his Brooklyn community. But before I continue, I must acknowledge my colleagues in government who I see here today, the amazing State Attorney General, yours, Brooklyn Tish James. Our District Attorney, Eric Gonzalez, is here from LeBrons. Brooklyn's own public advocate, Jomani Williams. Your Senator Roxanne Fersaud is here. And my colleague in government is here, as well, the amazing Councilmember Sandy Nurse is here. Oh my goodness, I'm excited, but I'm not gonna be here too long, because I have to tell you, when I first met Councilmember Banks, I remember being so impressed by his steadfast commitment to improving the community that raised him and delivering for the people who call it home. Even before being elected to office, Councilmember Banks ran programs for our youth, organized to protect services for older adults, and championed a better quality of life for public housing residents. As a lot of you already know, he's been involved in so many community and civic organizations in different capacities, including the East New York United Concerned Citizens Incorporated, the Seventy-Fifth Precinct Community Council, the Van Sickland Block Association. And the Bullard Houses Nursery Daycare. And like me, Councilmember Banks served on his local community board, and also like me, he was the Education Chair for his community board. He is a true public servant. And knows his constituents, advocates for his community, and is focused on delivering results that our residents deserve. Councilmember Banks has demonstrated his effectiveness as a community leader, and now he brings those experiences and skills to the people's house at City Hall. And it will be indeed to fight for his constituents in District Forty-Two. I have the utmost confidence in his ability to be the voice of his district, while also addressing the biggest challenges facing our city through our legislative, budgetary, and oversight roles. Although it's only been a week since the start of the new term, everything that has led up to this moment shows us that Councilmember Banks will be a fantastic representative for this community. A fantastic representative for Brooklyn and for New York City. I look forward to our strong partnership to deliver for all New Yorkers. I wanna personally thank you all for being here for him today. District Forty-Two, let's get to work. Congratulations, Councilmember.
It's amazing how, um, a, a simple song can say so much. You can be as articulate as you want to as you try to communicate with God. And God does not, uh, need to hear long versions of how we want to be philosophical in our approach with them. All you have to say is, "Thank you." Thank you. And "thank you" says a lot. And when you look at Chris's life, uh, he came up through the hard and challenging way of just being on the ground, doing the right things for this community. And now you have a person in the City Council who's going to fight on your behalf. Based on the things that your community needs and based on what your community stands for. From his days in the precinct council, uh, to his days on fighting to make sure that we can bring economic development to the city. Uh, you just have a grassroots brother that's coming into a body during some challenging times. That's why we have to deal with so many issues. And we need folks who are, don't understand, who do understand that it's not only about dollars and cents, it's about common sense. It's about just having a common sense approach to the things that are important to your constituency on the ground. Because there's a whole lot of folks that would articulate what you need. You need someone that understands what you need, because he came from within you, and that's what you have. And, uh, Chris, I'm so excited about his arrival. I want him to bring that same level of energy that he has brought in this community for so many years. And you need new, young, uh, intelligent, vigorous, excited leadership to join uh, those who are there now to make sure that your voices are heard. So you should be extremely, uh, proud. Uh, he never surrendered, never gave up. Always pushed forward to make sure he sits your word in court. So I wanna say congratulations, uh, uh, to you, uh, Chris, as you start this battle of fighting on behalf of your, your community. Tune out the noise. There's a whole lot of noise. You know, tune out the haters. You know, because there's a whole lot of haters. Tune out those who think you're gonna speak on other than the things that are important to your constituency. Your constituency matters, it matters, and as long as you stay close to your faith and believe as you are being inaugurated and you are doing that here in the church, keep the church at the center of your life, and don't be ashamed of God. A lot of us are elected and we're afraid to stay with Christians. I bring my Christianity and my religion with me in City Hall, and those who don't understand it, they better get over it. God made me, God is gonna sustain me, and God made you, brother, God is gonna sustain you. I wish you so much on this journey, this is only the beginning of your journey. There's so much more to go. People think you can't do it, they're gonna say it's not possible. We heard all that before, heard it before. God took a perfectly imperfect person. I say it all the time, dyslexic, arrested, now I'm elected to be the man to see you in New York. You can do whatever you want, brother. God be with you. Stay with this brother, pray for him, bring him up.
So, welcome to the team. I look forward to working with you. Assemblymember Nikki Lucas and our Congressman, as a cohesive team. And just remember, it's not only East New York and parts of Brownsville, you also have Canarsie. So anybody from Canarsie, just remember, I acknowledge all of that. I ask that our City Councilman and Mom, and whomever else you would like to have us join. I, Chris Banks.
I, Chris Banks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will support the Charter of the City of New York.
That I will support the Charter of the City of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember of the Forty-Second District for the Borough of Brooklyn.
Of Councilmember of the Forty-Second District of the Borough of Brooklyn.
King's County.
King's County.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. Lot of things to get done. To my colleagues that are gonna be moving around with me in City Hall, uh, in the Council Chamber specifically, Barrett, uh, the Councilman Jenny Joseph, um, who else we have here, and all the other councilmembers who are here, uh, thank you. Looking forward to working with you and, uh, making sure that we get what we need for my district and the, and Brooklyn. To you. To the folks that have been with me from day one. And I'm gonna go, uh, by line, and I'm gonna practice brother. And let me also backtrack when I say those folks who've been with me, my family first. My mother, my brothers, my aunt, um, my uncle, daughter and son, Chris Banks. It is truly a historic day for the East New York community and all of Brooklyn. Amen. The Bible says that in all of our ways, that we should first acknowledge Him, and if so did, God promised to direct our path. I don't know about you, but I want God to direct our path. So let's have a word with friends. Will you bow your heads with me all across the world? Father, great is your faithfulness to your people. We love you, we honor you, and worship you, because before there was ever a when or a where of this or of that, you saw this day. What makes us love you, Dad, is that you know all things, you stand outside of time, and you are able to look down the corridors of time, north, south, east, and west, and decide what you want to happen. And so, while we look through a glass darkly, you are able to see clearly. For that, we love you. You are God, and beside you, there is no other. So we honor you on this day first. And we ask you for your guidance, we ask you for your wisdom. I ask you to touch every speaker who know their minds and their hearts, of them to speak their truth today. And Father, we'll bless you all the days of our lives. We now thank you for it all, in the name that is above every name, the name of Jesus. And all God's people say, "Amen." And amen. To get to where he is in heaven. Would you just turn around and find three people, because I'm so glad to see you this afternoon. Is that anybody's testimony? Who can stand against the law? No one can. No one will. Victory belongs to Jesus. Victory belongs to Jesus. Victory belongs to him. Come on, sing. Who can stand? Come on, sing. No one can. And there is no one who will. Sing, who can stand? Sing, no one can. Sing, no one will. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Oh. I just want to thank you, Lord.